Call to order, the January 6th, 2025, city council meeting for the city of Bayport. Let's all stand and, oh wait. Yeah, it's like first we have to swear everybody in, is that how it works? Or do we do the pledge? I even got this ahead of time and I still messed it up.
Oh, it is first.
It is first, okay, swearing in first before I can even be the mayor and call the meeting to order.
Truth. Guys outnumber the gals up here now.
Try to be organized. Those workshops we have ahead of time that are always making us feel.
All right, I state your name.
I'm Michelle Hanson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
The office of mayor.
For the city of Bayport.
City of Bayport.
In the county of Washington.
In the county of Washington.
And state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. All right, thanks ma'am. Thank you. Um, so now that I'm the mayor, I'm gonna do the oath for our new council member Carl Bliss and returning member Ethan Gilmore. So similar, you guys wanna stand at your seats even though the?
We both want it at the same time.
Yeah, we're gonna do both at the same time. So you're gonna say aye and then state your name at the same time.
Aye Carl Bliss.
Ethan almost forgot his name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city council.
The office of city council.
For the city of Bayport.
For the city of Bayport.
And the county of Washington.
And the county of Washington.
In the state of Minnesota.
In the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
The best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, you're in. Okay, here we go, welcome Carl. Stay standing, cuz we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now Matt's gonna call the roll.
Councilmember Dahl, here, councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Councilmember Bliss.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Mayor Hanson.
Here. All right, great, um, so we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I move to approve the agenda tonight as presented.
Thanks Katie, wait a second.
I'll say it.
All right, thanks Ethan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, proclamations, commendations, petitions, and announcements. The December Recycling Award recipient is Jeffrey Lee at 1123 Inspiration Parkway North, who will be awarded for recycling efforts with a grant from Washington County. And I'm gonna switch the order of these a little bit, but um, there's a farewell gathering that's planned to recognize outgoing council member Connie Carlson. It's gonna be held on January 16th from four o'clock to 5:30 at the Bayport Library. Everybody's welcome and encouraged to attend and say thanks to Connie for her time. Um, we all had a chance at the end of the last meeting to kinda wish her well. Kinda weird, I've never been sitting up here without Connie, other than times when she's been sick or whatever, but all the 14 years I've been up here, she's been with me, so. And then I have a proclamation that I'm gonna read, and then we have a guest that will speak a little bit about it at the open forum. All right, so this is a proclamation of the World Snow Sculpting Championship Malta Day as January 15th, 2025. Whereas the city of Bayport, Minnesota is proud to celebrate cultural diversity and foster international relationships through events that bring together individuals and communities from across the globe. And whereas the World Snow Sculpting Championship, a prestigious event that showcases the artistry, creativity, and skill of snow sculptors from around the world, sculpteurs from around the world, will be held on January 15th through the 18th in 2025, the team Mela, Mila?
Malia.
Malia? There's no I in there. Representing their nation of Malta and contributing to the global exchange of artistic expression. And whereas that team is a dedicated and talented group of snow sculptors, they will be participating in this esteemed competition and their involvement highlights the spirit of unity and international friendship. And whereas it's fitting and proper for the city of Bayport to honor and recognize the remarkable efforts of that team as they represent their country of Malta on the global stage and participate in this exciting celebration of art and winter culture. And whereas the city of Bayport recognizes the positive impact that such international events have on fostering goodwill, promoting cultural exchange, and inspiring creativity among those who participate and witness these remarkable works of art. Now therefore, I, Michelle Hanson, mayor of the city of Bayport, do hereby proclaim January 15th, 2025, as Malta Day in Bayport. On this day, we extend a warm welcome to Team Mela, Malia, representing the country of Malta and all participants of the World Snow Sculpting Championship, celebrating their contributions to the cultural and artistic landscape of our community and the world. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Bayport to be affixed this sixth day of January 2025. I don't think I've ever read anything so official sounding. Thank you Jason. All right, so um, so that's kind of a fun, exciting thing and I'm gonna open the, or we're gonna now have the open forum and we're gonna quick have Jason come up, I think, before we have Tori. Um, this is a portion of the meeting to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the meeting agenda. City council may take action or reply at the time of the statement, or maybe, may give direction to staff regarding investigation of the comments expressed. A total of 15 minutes is allotted for public comment during the open forum. So welcome, introduce yourself please.
Well, thank you, as Michelle said, I'm Jason Howard, I'm president and CEO at First State Bank and Trust, just down the way. Thank you mayor for the proclamation, just give a little bit of backstory, so. World Snow Sculpting Championship is their fourth year downtown Stillwater this year. Uh, the Greater Stillwater Chamber of Commerce hosts this event every year. And as part of that event, um, they ask for team hosts. And so the bank, uh, for the second year in a row, will be hosting a team. And uh, this year we're hosting uh, the Team Malia, I believe it's, that's how I heard it, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but we'll, we'll confirm that next week. Uh, the team from Malta, um, just to help them feel welcome and comfortable here, um, in the St. Cry Valley. And so they will be coming in late Monday night and then the bank will be helping them just get settled in and getting around and getting them any tools they need for the snow sculpting championship. And uh, so we've got some fun activities planned at the bank and talk to the mayor here and see if the city of Bayport wanted to have a little fun with it. And so the proclamation is just a way to show them that we wanna welcome them to this community. And so I'm gonna present this to the team uh, next week when they arrive. And I believe we're working with Matt Simon, possibly displaying some Maltese flags around town. So thank you for that and gonna highlight it on social media and have a little fun with it, so.
Yeah.
I'll add Woody's Bar is a restaurant sponsor for another team. So it's great that this community is uh, is uh, supporting the event in downtown Stillwater. And um, the event draws a significant crowd for the weekend. So if you haven't been down there, I encourage you to go down there and check out the sculptures, they're, they're quite amazing, so.
Thank you Jason.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, and just one other note, um, Mabel's is gonna be possibly doing a special malt for Malta.
Yeah, thank you, so I've been in touch with a few businesses, schools, the library, to see if they wanna partake in the fun and the library's gonna be participating. And Olio is gonna be doing a menu item and Wally's gonna be doing something at Mabel's and trying to get a few more, so. Uh, there'll be a lot of Maltese uh, themes going on.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you guys for supporting this. I think it's great that it's highlighting our city as well and I appreciate your efforts in doing that. Um, and Woody's, thanks to them too for being one of the Taste of the Nations restaurants. So they, they chose the United States team from Wisconsin. So we will be alternating, I believe, the flags, once you get the Malta flags. We're gonna have US and Malta flags hung through the cities till we can also highlight Woody's.
Madam Mayor, I suggested Wisconsin flags, but.
No, they're actually, yeah, don't do that. No, and actually.
You trying to start another flag burning?
Are you just trying to be funny because Woody's wanted to highlight Wisconsin food and they were told that they need to do American or something, yeah. Maybe it was the other way around, I don't know, but anyways, I, we should ask Mary. I think it was actually the other way around, cuz she said, yeah, this'll be easier, I can just, we were like, you could just do cheese curds and stuff, right? But anyways, American flags it is, cuz we have those. All right.
Excellent, well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, yeah, that's gonna be fun, all right.
I will follow up then, and I don't know if there's an official seal or signature that I can get for me to make this look all fancy.
Yes, says Sarah.
Yeah, we will.
We'll work with her, all right, great, thanks Jason. Okay, um, we have listed that Tori Christensen from Lamb Bridge Ecological is here as well. You wanna come on up?
Sure.
He is gonna talk about the Barker's Alps Park Woodland Restoration.
Yeah, um, thanks for having me. I uh, seen some of you out walking the trails as we've been working. Um, my name's Tori Christensen, I own Lamb Bridge Ecological and I happen to be a Bayport resident. So um, the project that we've been working on is walking distance from my house. I've been out there quite a bit with my crews. Um, and I have a pretty intimate knowledge about what's going on out there, um, day to day. So um, I thought I'd give a little update on where things are at and what the future looks like, um, for the next couple of years. Um, cuz it is an ongoing project that'll be going into 2027, so. Um, but yeah, the majority of the work that we've been carrying out, the big heavy machinery is leaving the site now. We've had, um, we had a couple good days to burn some of the material that we were taking out. Um, we did that right before Christmas, we burned the majority of the invasive species that we removed. Um, that, those piles are burned down and now the, what's left out there, if you walk through the park, um, are sporadic, smaller piles, um, material that we can't really do anything with until we get snow. So we're kind of in a holding pattern, um, to finish the project until we get a little bit more snow. Um, but yeah, it's gone very well. We've, um, I'd say the days that I've been out there, I've gotten a lot of, um, I've met a lot of people and most, almost everybody that I've talked to has been very positive about the project. Um, if anything, I've been getting a little bit of, you know, just misconceptions about cutting trees. Um, cuz I knew, I told Simon, when we started the project, that the pines on the corner of the trail, if you come down, I knew that that would be kind of a touchy subject for some people. Um, but those pines were planted, pines, they are native. Um, the majority of our work has been removing invasive species. Those pines were really the only native pines that were there, but they're not really a part of the plant community that we're trying to restore. Um, and the goal for us is to get a more herbaceous understory, it's more diverse, that has a little bit more prairie grass component to it, so we can manage the site with fire over time. That's my personal goal, so it'd be, you know, just as inspiration does their controlled burns, um, there'll be areas of that park that will be more conducive to having controlled burns. Um, mainly the upper knobs, I don't know if you've seen it, but like there's, it's much more open than it was.
You can see the river.
It's very open. Um, and there's, there was a lot of surprises when we started to open it up. I didn't realize how much topography there was in the park. But it's really a very interesting site, the, the upper knobs that we've restored, there's a couple of them with oak trees. Um, those are more representative of oak savanna, plant community, and that's kind of the goal of the project, was to restore oak savanna. Um, so those will be much more easier to manage with controlled burns over time. Um, the lower ends of the park is more wetter and not really conducive for controlled burning, but. Um, yeah, the project as a whole has gone very well. Um, I know that when we started burning the material, we were worried about smoke and that was a factor for those couple of days, but we were able to get the majority of that done in about a three-day time period. So that, I'm happy to say, is mostly over with, so there shouldn't be any complaints or um, any hazards of smoking residences out, um, going forward, so. But yeah, that's uh, kind of where it's at now. And if anyone has any questions, I can answer questions.
Oh, we have lots of questions, I have a question, I just wanted to follow up on the why you need snow thing.
Well, if, if we start, if we start burning piles and we don't have snow, we can't put them out easily.
Okay, it's just to have water.
So more or less, I do have a permit to burn piles, but it happened this weekend, we burned up on top of the hill on Saturday and the smoke was going right into Inspiration. So we shut it down.
Okay.
And it was hard to put the fires out at that point, so.
Okay, makes sense now.
Usually we like to have snow, just for safety precautions.
Oh, and then I just thought of another thing, I didn't notice when I walked through, is the little frog pond thing at the entrance, is that like kinda down near the entrance?
Yeah, where all the rocks.
Still there?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's still there.
Okay.
Yep.
Good, all right. Carl, did you wanna?
Yeah, it's, it's, thank you for your work there, it's, I'll admit, it's stark now. This is where I have to trust the process and trust you and thank, um, thanks for kinda educating us through this. You mentioned the oak savanna, so would a good comparison be kind of the oak savanna area near the SNA as, as what this, what you hope to have this look like?
Yep, yep, very much so.
It's helpful to see the future that way.
Yeah. Yeah, I know it was, uh, and that's mainly the comments I've got, you know, when people walk by. They're like, oh, are you gonna plant, you know, and I, I explain that this is part of a three-year project. Um, this is the initial, you know, shocker part of the project where everything is gone and there's not, and it, it doesn't help that there's not snow on the ground. Usually we have a snow cover, it helps a little bit, but now you can see the bare dirt and it does look stark. Um, but we have, um, the, what the future looks like is two years of, of further management. So we'll be managing mostly buckthorn, that, there'll be a bunch of re-sprouts that come up. Um, I'm anticipating there to be a lot of garlic mustard that comes up now that it's open to sunlight. Um, so we'll be out there, you know, intermittently over the next couple of years, managing what comes up. Um, and then we have a seeding phase that will happen after we're done with our initial, probably this year, we'll go through the invasive species removal, which will be spot spraying herbicides on, you know, what comes up that we don't want there. So um, from there, then we'll be adding species and planting and seeding. But we'll probably wait till 2026 before we start that process.
Are those new plantings gonna be shorter, kind of the prairie level sort of plantings?
Yeah, where the pines were at, we'll see how, um, you know, there's a lot of stumps there now, so like we have to kinda work with that, um, cuz we can't really bring tractors in to till the ground because of all the stumps from the removals. So we'll look at that and see what we can do, but um, you know, where those pines were, you know, I'm kind of anticipating that there'll be enough sunlight there to have more of a, you know, more flower pollinator garden on the corner there.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll try to get something like that going and then we'll plant, you know, kind of boring grasses and understory herbaceous cover in the forest there. And then those knobs up on top have the most potential and those will be, um, those will benefit a lot from controlled burns, but we'll also be seeding.
Okay, did you still have a question?
Well, Carl touched on one of mine, yeah, the oak savanna, and that we're gonna kinda be bookended now. That kinda whole ridge is gonna be bookended with oak savanna, so I appreciate that. And um, just to the starkness of it, um, if you're somebody, I'm sort of into this stuff. It, it's a rude awakening having walked in there the last 10 years and seeing all the buckthorn. I mean, that's what, it's somebody that recognizes, I can see that stuff from 30 yards away. I'm like, oh there, it's full of buckthorn in there. It's really great to see that stuff eradicated and um, there's where I date myself as a kid, growing up on Fourth Street and Third Avenue South. Um, we used to go up into the hills, we called it, near, near where Michelle is and we used to be able to see down from top, I could see down to my house on Fourth Street. And literally I could, my mom would say, time to come home for lunch, and say, hey mom, how's the laundry going? It was really cool and it's cool to see that stuff open and be able to see the river now. And, and so I applaud the work and am super excited and, and would encourage people that are worried about what it might look like to walk that oak savanna on the, on the south end of town and, and just look at how different and how visually appealing that type of a, a natural area is, cuz it's pretty great up there, so.
Yeah, it's a special, it's a special place, as far as the connectivity to the, all those acres. You know, so we had these disjunct, separate pieces and now we're starting to connect that, so. I, I live on the end of Fifth Street and, you know, I would like to see the buckthorn, you know, the removal go all along the bluff, right? It's pretty thick all along the hillside there from Barker's to back towards the SNA there, so.
Well, if you can get us another grant, we'll put you on that.
Have you walked our land and water legacy property?
Oh, we brought that up, yeah, we were gonna put Simon on that to talk to you about that.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to look.
Okay, great, yeah.
Thanks for the time and presentation and.
Yeah. Yeah, I have before and after pictures, so at some point when it's done and there's more progress, um, I can maybe give a PowerPoint or something to show.
Yeah, that'll be great.
The process, so.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Yeah, it's a really cool project and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm new to Bayport, I've been here two years now. So um, the day that it snowed, there was actually kids up there, my kids, and some neighbor kids came up and they were sledding down the slopes back there.
Oh.
So that was kinda cool to see, cuz it was not open. I mean, when I first walked it, I couldn't even, we couldn't even see what was going on back there. It was too thick to even walk through, so now at least it's open where you can see the ravines and you can see the topography.
I feel like it's just safer too, and when, when the new school comes in and there might be kids walking through there, I feel like they would feel sa, I feel safer walking when it's cleared like that, cuz I always thought someone could be hiding in those woods, you know, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's good for people and it's good for plants and animals too, so it's all.
Yeah, great, well, thank you, thanks for taking the time to come and explain a little bit more about what's going on and, and for all your efforts, so. And welcome to Bayport.
Yeah, thank you, sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, and you don't have to stick around for the meeting if you don't want to. Though it's really exciting, you know, so much exciting. Okay, anyone else that wants to speak? No, okay. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We're gonna consider a resolution adopting items one through nine, the December 2nd, 2024 city council workshop minutes, the December 2nd, 2024 city council regular meeting minutes, December payables and receipts, December building, plumbing, mechanical, and zoning permits report, renewal of commercial refuse collar licenses for 2025, special event application from the Bayport Community Action League for their 2025 community events, appointment of Connie Carlson to the library board, and hiring of Luke Swellin to serve on the fire department, supplemental agreement with SEH for environmental services related to the Fourth Avenue North Street Improvement Project. Does anyone want to so move that?
I move to adopt a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented.
Alright, thanks.
Second.
All right, thanks Carl and John, roll call votes.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Bliss.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Hanson.
Aye. All right, um, no public hearing, so on to unfinished business. We're gonna consider a labor agreement with the Minnesota Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement Employees Union Local 320 for this January 2025 until December of 2027. This one's for the police officers and Matt's gonna present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, as the mayor mentioned, uh, this particular contract agreement or union agreement is with the police officers. Um, we've probably been working about six, eight months on this. Um, it always seems to be a tedious project, process, even though there's not a lot to it. Um, a lot of back and forth. Um, obviously the big one this year was officer wages. Um, we've seen a huge increase, um, to police officers' wages throughout the metro. Um, and we primarily, well, exclusively used East Metro comparables or comparables um, for this contract. Um, some of the bigger things that are also in this besides wage increases, um, we increased the tuition reimbursement program, essentially if you wanna go back to school to get your bachelor's or master's degree. Um, we increased it from 3,000 per year to 50, to 5,250 per year, but also put a cap on it. Um, having obviously educated, very well-educated, um, police officers is definitely a priority for us. And that doesn't hold necessarily just for going back to get your masters or something like that. It could be any education related to, um, being a police officer essentially, so. Um, let's see, a couple of the other highlighted ones, we updated the fitness incentive program. Um, the current one only has like a top level that they could reach. Um, we reduced the levels, um, to other levels so that, um, there are other possibilities that, that each officer could reach. Um, one of the big ones was compensation for the canine officer. Um, this is part of the Fair Labor Standards Act. Um, there's a requirement out there that requires care of the dog essentially, and that being a part of your time that you need to put in. And so now there's a whole section on how that gets paid out and what the responsibility is of the department and the responsibility of the canine officer when it comes to care of the dog. Um, and then finally, um, there was no cost of this from the city, but the officers wanted a healthcare savings plan installed. Essentially, they're required to, um, their leftover sick time upon retirement or termination gets put into. Gets put into a healthcare savings plan, which they can use for future healthcare costs once they retire, so. Um, those were the big highlighted ones. I did, um, uh, all the numbered ones in my memo are all the specific changes. Um, throughout the, uh, the contract, so if somebody has a specific question on any of those. Without having to read through the whole contract, those are all the changes. Um, so I, I will say the, the wages that are currently in there are budgeted for in twenty twenty-five. So, um, at this point, we recommend that adopt a motion approving the labor agreement with the Teamsters. Uh, for the public works off, or police officers.
Okay, police officers, alright, great. Thank you, Matt, and thanks for all the time that you spent working with them and for documenting for us line by line kind of what changed. I appreciate that. Um, and of course, you know, we do have to be competitive with our wages. So there was a, a pretty major increase for the current year. And then it's a little more reasonable after that, but it was good to get us up to.
So one addition there, Mayor, sorry to, um, reflect back on that again. But, um, this gets us to the wages that we proposed, uh, in the contract. Um, for the comparables, we're at about the fifty percent level of everybody else in the area, so.
So like we were the median, kind of, is what you're saying?
Yes, correct. The average and the median happened to be roughly the same, um. For when we were doing comparables, and so, yeah, it was definitely an increase. We're, we're not even at the top end, which I don't think we have to be, um, to be competitive. Because there's definitely advantages, uh, of being in a, uh, smaller city, smaller department, right, so.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments? Does anyone want to make a motion approving that?
I'll move to approve a labor agreement with the Minnesota Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement Employees Union Local three twenty. For January first twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first twenty twenty-seven for police officers.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Thanks Ethan and Katie, um, feels like we should have a roll call, but it doesn't tell me that, I need one. Nope, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, anyone opposed? Okay, so that passes and then, um, wanna tell us a little bit about the Public Works contract?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, so this is the second contract, um, of the night. It's with the Public Works Maintenance Workers, um, kind of the same thing. We've spent probably six to eight months, uh, working through, um, stipulations and, um, different items within the agreement. Um, again, Public Works in, uh, wages have increased as have, um, the police officers. Not quite by as much, uh, so it didn't take quite as much to get them back. Again, we used, uh, East Metro comparables, um, and again, we made it to about the fifty percent. Um, average of those East Metro wages. Um, a couple of the other items or the major items within this, uh, agreement. Uh, we did do a revised job skills incentive program. Um, I didn't detail out the, um, how that works, but it's on a tiered system now. Rather than just getting, say, fifty dollars because you have a water license. Um, we did different water licenses, because there's a D, C, B and A. You can acquire your B here, um, but to get to the highest level, there's a fair amount of education. Um, that you need to acquire, um, but you're also getting incentivized, incentivized. Right, um, to, to acquire that. Um, and you can use some of the money, um, as far as the edu- education money. And the city of Bayport will help, um, you work through some of that other stuff, so, um, pretty happy that that made it in there. Um, Public Works also asked for a revised vacation accrual, um, so that changed. There is an increase in specific days for holiday pay. Uh, it's actually not holiday pay, it'd be the overtime acquired during a holiday. Uh, that's specific to four days of the year, which is Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day and New Year's Day. Um, and then, uh, finally would be the, the wage thing. Um, where there was a pretty significant increase from past years. Um, just to get the market adjustment up there to what the fifty percent level is for the East Metro. So city staff is recommending, uh, a motion adopting or approving the labor agreement. With the Public Works Maintenance Workers.
Alright, thanks, Matt, any questions? Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll move, I'll move to approve a labor agreement with the Minnesota Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement Employees Union. Local three twenty for January first twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first twenty twenty-seven for Public Works.
Thanks, John, second, anybody?
A second.
Thanks Katie, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, again, thanks for your work on that, Matt. And, um, let's move on to new business. I can't seem to get my stupid agenda. I don't know what I did, okay, sorry, um. So we're gonna consider a resolution supporting an application for MinDOT Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Grant Program. For pedestrian improvements leading to the new elementary school. Matt, you're on again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I like being able to talk at the whole meeting. Um, this was slightly discussed at the workshop today about, um, a sidewalk improvement project along Fifth Avenue. Um, essentially it will connect where a sidewalk ends at Eighth Street. Um, to where the sidewalk, for some reason, is put out into the road, um, by the softball field at Barker's.
For some reason.
Um, there is significant cost to that project and city staff is pursuing a Safe Routes to School grant. Uh, to cover some of that cost. Um, the Safe Routes to School grant is specific to construction costs only. Um, and so that means no engineering costs are covered. Um, no, if you happen to overrun on your construction cost that you asked specifically for, that is not covered. There's a limit on, uh, there's not a limit on what you ask for, well, there probably is, like, I don't know the limit, it's probably like a million dollars, but. Um, you can't go back and ask for more if you underestimate. So, um, we're working hard on, uh, refining the actual construction costs. Um, there's significant items with this project that'll have to get covered, um, new curb cuts, new sidewalk. There's some very slanted areas or very sloped areas, um, where the sidewalk is gonna go. So there's some small retaining walls that have to go there, there's a couple, at least one fire hydrant that has to be moved. There's some stormwater infrastructure that also has to be moved, so, um, there will be some significant costs. With what is essentially a two-block sidewalk installation. Um, the part of the requ- grant requirement or applica- excuse me, application requirement. Is a formal resolution showing that the council supports the project and pledges to maintain it for a minimum of ten years. So, uh, hence the reason for the resolution and not just a, like, a letter of support. Um, so staff is recommending city council adopt the resolution, supporting the project, pledging future maintenance requirements. And pledging to cover the, uh, engineering and any construction costs that exceed the grant amount if we are awarded the grant. That it, any questions?
Can you talk a little bit about the city maintaining it for ten years piece?
Yeah, um, my guess would be that, say, one of the panels cracked or something like that. So that's gonna be like minor maintenance, right? Um, as far, I assume you're thinking like plowing and different stuff like that. Um, I can see that going both ways, I don't think that's the requirement. Or that's what they are speaking to when they're talking maintenance. Maintenance would be to make sure that it's maintained from a, um, ADA standpoint. From, um, maintaining an effect cracks or something and needs replacement.
Not shoveling and plowing.
Not shoveling, so that, that'll probably be another question that comes up at some point. I did happen to meet with, uh, five of the neighbors there who border that. And that was actually one of their main questions of who will be plowing it and will it be their responsibility?
And you told them it would be their responsibility?
I told them it would be their responsibility, yes.
That's another, just for anybody watching, you're responsible for the sidewalks in front of your house.
Yeah, okay, other questions? Okay, um, I, I had a question for Matt that we resolved through email, just the saying that we will cover all the costs. That are associated with the project beyond what we're getting for the, the grant. I was just wondering if there was any chance that the county would be paying for any of that since it's along their road? And are we kind of putting ourselves, or even are we considering doing assessments for that from those property owners? Not that I'm advocating for that, but I just didn't wanna put us in a, in a bind by saying that we are going to cover those costs. As a city when maybe there's other options that were out there, so it sounds like there really aren't, so.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um, you mentioned the county, because there's not a county project going on at the same time, they won't participate in it.
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't eliminate us from potentially, um, I suppose getting, if there's another grant out there. Or something like that, or we find somebody else to help participate in or use funding. Um, potentially from one of our other park funds or something like that.
Okay.
And I hit, I did bring up in the workshop and I, I just wanna make sure that we are committed as a city, no matter what happens, grant or no grant. To pushing this through and completing it, so we don't have a brand-new shiny school. That kids are having to walk through people's yards to get to.
Or on the road.
Or worse yet, on the road.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Carl's playing it cool for his first meeting, trying to be quiet over there.
I made a motion already.
He did, he's good, alright, um, okay, should we make a motion?
I'll move to adopt a resolution supporting an application for MinDOT Safe Routes to School. Infrastructure Grant Program, Program as presented.
Alright, thanks John and Ethan, we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Bliss.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Hanson.
Aye, alright, thank you, hope that works out. And now we are going to consider appointments, designations and city council liaison assignments for twenty twenty-five. So Matt, what, what do we have here, mostly Connie's empty spots, right?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Which will make more empty spots when we switch people around.
Yeah.
So this is pretty much so just a discussion, uh, between council members. Um, we would be happy to facilitate any questions if somebody has something on a specific duty. Um, but really, like I said, a discussion between you, if somebody just wants to fill Connie's vacant spots. Or if, um, anybody on the council wants to currently switch what they're doing. Um, I don't know if anybody has thought about it, um.
Yeah, I, I've had conversations a little bit with Carl too. We, first I think we need to get, uh, the acting deputy mayor slotted. Um, because Connie used to do that.
Yep.
So that person would be, uh, leading meetings if I can't make it, um, that's pretty much their role, right? Is there any other thing, okay?
Nope.
Um, so does anybody really, really want that job, otherwise I would give it to the person with the most seniority, which would be John, right?
That's what I was gonna say, give it to the most seniority person. If that's okay.
Okay, alright, you okay with that, John?
I'm okay with that.
I have not missed a meeting in fourteen years, so, so far, so good. So far, so good, okay.
It's incredible.
That is, hats off to you, that is incredible.
I don't know how I do it, just lucky, no, set, set that day aside all the time, okay. So, um, I, Carl had mentioned to me that he's potentially interested in the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Liaison. That is one of my roles right now, and I have been interested in the library board liaison for years, but Connie's always had it. So that mixes things up a little bit, um, I don't know, what else, anybody else?
Um, I mean, I don't mind in middle St. Croix, WMO. The, the problem I have with it is it's no longer in Bayport. It used to be a lot easier when it was in Bayport.
I know, I tried when I went to see it, to get them to come back, but it didn't work.
I pounded away a little bit to no, but other than that, I, I guess I'm fine, I'd rather have one that was in town, but.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good at, I mean, I'm fine where I'm at with mine, a lot of the other ones are difficult for me for work.
What else do we have to in terms of Connie?
Just the library.
Yeah, I know, I was just writing them all down to see what we might change here. I can, I'll keep the fire relief unless anyone really wants that.
I could be the alternate for the planning commission liaison, because that's a Monday as well.
Okay, unless, I mean, typically a new guy usually gets that, but if he would rather do fun, because he's been on the planning commission. Might wanna do more different things, so if you're okay with him taking that, okay?
They are meeting on a Tuesday this month, but otherwise it's typically one.
Okay, so cable, um, Ethan and then John, are you still good with being his?
Yeah, I'll stay, I'm gonna try, get, I'm gonna start trying to do it remotely.
Okay, let me, I'm just jotting these down so then I can write notes if we need to change things. Because it's hard when it's on there instead of, John and then, okay, so Katie. The other thing I think I'd have to give up because of library board, I think they might. That's third Tuesday and it's, I feel like they've changed the B Cal meeting date. Because I think they're the same time now.
I think it's, yeah.
I think it's the third Tuesday.
Been the same the last three times, because it's been like.
But I, I would be good if someone else wants to do the B Cal liaison other, as the alternate, other than Katie, other than me. So Katie's the primary, um.
Well, I'll, I mean, what, I'll take alternate if somebody wants to take one of my alternates.
Yeah, I could, oh.
John, I can take your cable commission, wonderful.
Okay, so we've got Carl's gonna do LIAC and then he's also gonna do John's alternate for cable. Um, so right now you're watershed, I'm alternate, Katie, planning commission with Ethan alternate. I'll take library board, you're the alternate for that, okay?
We don't miss meetings.
I know, you never have to show up, same with the fire, fire relief one, right?
Otherwise, I can take your library alternate.
I think Katie wants to do that one, so let's give Katie that, no, let's do that.
More than the fire, just because of the days.
Okay, alright, so then, let's see, so fire, you can still be my alternate. Okay, we got cable, did you go one time? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you didn't miss one of those.
Yeah, because that's the same at as my lines meeting sometimes, so, yeah. And sometimes our, this meeting interrupts the fire meetings, but whatever, okay, okay, so, um. John, you are the alternate for the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission, and now Carl is the primary. You are good with that, right? I didn't speak out of turn, you said you wanted that.
That's when they meet.
Oh, it's on here, oh, it says quarterly, let me tell you when the next one is.
You'll get a lot of emails. Well, no, I'm taking the Excel one.
No, no, let's see, um. Where is it? I'll look on my calendar, that would be easier than looking at the emails. Why don't I know?
Somebody having a lightsaber battle?
Yeah, what is going on there? Is it outside? Okay, so the next Lake Elmo Airport Advisory is February, they have them all planned, February twenty-fourth.
Okay.
And then May nineteenth. And then, May 19th. August 25th, and November 24th is what they have, and they meet at four o'clock in Baytown at their.
Okay.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, so Carl, John, and then the Excel thing, I'll stay on that. And then, we've got Katie and John for BCal. Okay, did you get all those? I can hand you my little sheet if not.
Would you just be willing to go through and read them one more time? So, everyone's on the same page?
Okay, Watershed, John, primary, Michelle, alternate. Planning Commission, Katie, Ethan, alternate. Library, Michelle with Katie as the alternate. Fire, Michelle with Ethan. Cable, Ethan with John, with Carl, sorry. LiAC, the Lake Elmo, is Carl with John. And then, Excel didn't change, and BCal is changing from Katie to then John as the alternate. Got it? Make sense, everyone on board?
Yep.
Do we have to actually make a motion? Yes.
I move to approve the 2025 appointments of the city council liaison assignments as discussed.
Second.
All right, thanks, Katie and Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna pose, no, all right. And now, the regular meeting dates for 2025. Does any, does anyone have any objections? I know you can't make it to the February meeting, Carl. February and April?
Yep.
I'd say we move to July to the 14th, so, the 7th.
That'll be, no, add my calendar. Okay, should we, do we want to worry about February and April and moving them at all for, or do we just, hopefully, not other people are out at the same time, and we just?
I wouldn't with the February, it's most of that month.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, I forgot, okay.
You, Ethan, you know the spring break?
For?
Stillie schools?
It's late March, I think.
Yeah.
Last week of March, yeah, so that shouldn't affect it, it has in the past, but, yeah, the July one, I, I mean, that's the 4th of July weekend, people will be out, I don't know.
Oh, that's a good point, and reading the packet over the 4th of July weekend does not sound like fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a.
Can we, is that bad?
That's not a big deal.
Well, and do you, is it harder for staff anyways, because people will be out?
How about later in the week, maybe, or the other ways?
I think that messes with the Valley Access stuff, but we could ask.
Or doing it on an actual different day.
Yeah, because I think they have other things they have to do, but.
Sometimes they have it scheduled, because I think that first week, there's a lot of council meetings.
We require.
Oh, and weird, just because our Monday isn't the very first week.
14th, really goofy guys.
Sarah says the 14th works.
Yeah.
That's better.
I'm good, I think that's better, just.
Well, it's not better for me, but.
No.
Well, that's the Lions meeting night, I've just missed Lions, but it's okay.
John, you gotta keep your streak alive.
I'm the secretary, I gotta.
You gotta keep your streak alive here.
Yeah, I'm not gonna give, I'm not gonna not be here for the Lions meeting. Shh, don't tell the Lions. Okay.
Other than that, I think the rest of them, yeah, seem normal.
Okay, so, we're on board with changing July 7th to July 14th? That make sense for people?
Yep.
Sorry.
That's good.
Then, no one else is gonna be gone, and I might be gone on the May meeting, but.
I mean, I could probably make July 7th, but frankly, I think having it, a meeting ever adjacent to a holiday weekend is a mistake.
I think it makes it harder on you guys, too. I feel like you wouldn't all be around, but maybe it's just the 4th you're gonna be off, and it's not that big of a deal, because you're already off on Fridays.
Well, then they have the whole like week.
Madam Mayor, mostly what happens is if it, if, when it falls close to a holiday, we're just trying to prep the bracket, prep the packet earlier, so.
I guess I would rather just stay with the 7th, but that's me, so we can all vote on what we, what you think is better.
Well, I mean, the trick is if, or what, what are we, are we typically just getting going on like budget stuff in July? Is that?
Yeah, that, Madam Mayor, members of council, probably at the July workshop, probably would be our very first preliminary budget workshop. Very preliminary. I'll, I mean, we could hold out to August, but it's nice to have one in July, a very preliminary one.
Well.
With numbers that we're, we're just thinking about at that point.
Very preliminary is, I mean, that, that's not unreasonable if somebody did have a vacation plan and just can't make it.
For the workshop.
Well, yeah, and, right.
I would think most people would be doing their vacation the week before that, but it's just the reading the packet over the holiday weekend, it's not.
Fourth is on Friday, they're gonna leave, they're gonna be on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, potentially Monday.
That's true, never know.
That'd be my guess.
You guys who have Mondays off. We're gonna do that, right?
Every Monday off.
Oh, you don't, okay. All right, so, you're leaning towards 14?
Uh, yeah, my daughter's birthday is the 5th, so we are going camping.
I'm probably fine with the 7th, but I just, as a rule, I don't.
You're indifferent?
You're indifferent, you're 14.
I'm 14.
Since we have a couple strong 14s, let's go with that.
That's great, thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay. Yeah, what is, why is it?
Is it that thing, that speaker? Go underneath and unplug it, or maybe you'll be unplugged from the back.
Okay, all right, so, moved it on the calendar, and now we need a motion to approve the dates as they were in the packet other than July, moving to the 14th. You can say so moved if that's what we decided.
Second.
All right, thanks, Ethan and John. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You wanna pose? All right, council liaison reports. Katie, do you want to start?
Yes, so I have BCal, their meeting was like a holiday meeting for December, but I do have all the dates for all the activities going on, so I'd like to run through those. First one will be the Easter egg hunt at Barker's Alps, that'll be April 19th. The bar crawl is tentative May 10th, and that just is through all the bars around here. Ice cream social will be June 4th, that's a Wednesday. Garage sales is Friday through Saturday, June 6th through 7th. Farmer's Market will start June 16th, go through October 13th, and that's again at the Village Green. So, Derby Days will start with Friday. The September 19th, that will be the Party in the Park at Perro again. The duck races will be Saturday, September 20th, and then the fireworks down at Lakeside that same night on September 20th. The Halloween at the Fire Hall will be on Halloween, October 31st. And then, lighting of the, of the green will be Wednesday, December 3rd, and hopefully, it will be warm enough and not as windy. At least, we had, this year, it was cold, we had to go to the library, so, but it still worked out great.
It did, it was kind of actually interesting to learn that maybe there's a role for being inside for some of it, at least.
Yeah.
For the crafts or whatever, maybe, or even having the vagabond thing inside, you can hear them much better.
Yeah, hear them.
All right, thank you, Katie.
Can you come back to me?
I can come back to you, John. Did the Cable Commission meet, Ethan?
No, it's gonna be quick back to you.
That's why Ethan wanted that job, did you pick up on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. How many meetings have you had to go to? Just a couple, right?
No, we usually have one like every three months.
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
I know, but you don't usually have them, no?
Well, we gotta stretch there.
Yeah, never mind. I'm just teasing you. Carl?
No liaison reports for me.
What? Planning Commission, I'm just kidding. Okay, and then, we don't have Connie to do the library, but we get a pretty good update from Jill, our packet, so. And then, are you ready, John, or do you want me to?
Um, go ahead.
Okay. So, I was able to attend a couple of the, we're calling it the Burr Crawl. In February, we're gonna have a second bar crawl, we do the summer one, and now the local businesses outside of BCal is not planning it. They're planning to do one related to the Ice Bar Series that Minnesota ICE is doing. They're the people that do the maze over at the Vikings Stadium area, and they put together an Ice Bar Series. So, we're slotted for the weekend of like February 20th, and they're gonna do a bar crawl during that time. We're having some other ice sculptures brought into town as well that Legion is sponsoring. BCal may sponsor a sculpture, too, they talked about. Talking about doing like a ice luge, kind of a drink shot thing at Woody's and some ice bean bake games and. Anyways, we're still waiting on them to put together their plans and provide it to the city for the, us to approve, probably at February meeting, but there is for sure gonna be an ice bar between Oleo and Manger, because they paid for that, so. Yeah, so that'll be a really fun thing for the, for the winter. I, so I have attended those meetings just to kind of help with them understanding what they might need to do with the city and that kind of thing. And Mary, also, Mary Gillette came and helped at the very first meeting. Lighting of, Ethan came to one, too. Lighting of the green was really fun, we talked about that, so I attended that. Matt and I, the 5th of December, met with Sheri Mogren and Diane Plasic, and we talked about the Valley Community Center that they're trying to get to come to the area, similar to like a YMCA, I think I've talked about this before, but they wanted specific input from us as a city of Bayport and whether we're supporting something like that. And we, of course, said we think it's a great idea and we need it, but, you know, we don't have money to give you to build this, so. But we'd like to support it in some other way. There was a King Plant Stakeholder Meeting online that I attended. There really isn't much for updates on that right now, they're kind of in a slow time, because they're kind of waiting for, I don't know. It's not exciting for us to hear what's going on at this point, I guess. I did have a chance to meet with Carl and just kind of chat a little bit about welcoming him and, yeah, and see if he had any questions. I also went that same day to a cannabis community education meeting down at Green Canopy in Lakeland Shores. And I don't know if you know that it's there, but it exists, you can buy all kinds of things down there. And they were very in, it was a super interesting presentation. They had the owner of the place talked about sort of where things stand, Minnesota versus Wisconsin, and a little bit of what we've already heard from Christina and, you know, that kind of thing, legally, what's going on. And then, he also had someone who grows talk a little bit about different strains and all of that, and how growing doesn't necessarily mean your city's gonna smell bad, and there's all these things, you know, it was just, it was really interesting. And then, there was someone who does like the pharmaceutical side of it and talked a little bit about how it's helping medicinally for people. And so, I was first the only like city representative there, and then I think it was the mayor of Lakeland, I think it was, that came. But anyways, it was, it was a great thing, I'm glad I went, I was there for like two hours, it was so interesting. Also attended Regional Council of Mayors meeting. It was interesting, because there was, it was about the outgoing mayors that didn't get reelected or maybe chose not to be reelected, right? And one of them was Marv Johnson from the city of Independence. He had been mayor for 45 years.
Goodness.
Goodness, yes. Super nice man, and so, they each, including him, gave us, you know, talked a little bit about lessons learned and what they did on the councils and all of that, and then we said goodbye to them. So, that was, it was a really cool meeting. Went to the Fire Relief Association meeting, pretty typical, nothing exciting there. Leadership in the Valley was Government Day just in December. So, we all started off with some leadership skills, which is always helpful. And then, we had a local elected official panel, so like Ted Kozlowski, outgoing County Commissioner Kreisel, Carly from Oak Park Heights, one of their council members. So, it was really interesting, we got to ask questions, they gave stories about, you know, what they, what they're doing, why. I was on that panel last year. We went to the State Capitol and had a tour, and I actually got to wave at Governor Walz, because he walked in in the middle of our tour, it was very exciting. And then, we did a tour of the Stillwater Public Works, which was also super informative. And then, that prompted me to plan some kind of a tour for our council to go check out, like, make sure everyone sees all the buildings we own, and then also do a Public Works tour. And then, I attended the Emergency and Disaster Training Session up at the County Courthouse area in that building, and it was focused on the roles of elected city officials if there's a disaster in our community. So, basically, I learned we call the guy at the county, so that was the biggest takeaway, but. And then, I've been working a little with Jason, as you could tell, Jason Howard from the bank, on that snow sculpting team and how we can support Malta with him. Simon and I talked this morning about another tiny little grant opportunity that we're working on that hopefully we'll tell you more about later. And then, I also this morning met with the owner of the new business that's next to Heartfelt Silks. Her name is Sheri Yucel, I think, I'm not sure how to say the last name. And her business is called Creator of Dots, and she's very interesting and very excited to be part of our community, so. I don't know if you guys noticed on Bayport Neighborhood back around Thanksgiving, she put a bunch of her product out in front of the shop and told everyone to come and get it, so. She's very giving and excited to be here, and it's beautiful stuff that she does, so look her up, Creator of Dots. She sells things online, not, it's not a retail shop, it's a place for her to create her art. And then, there was a couple Chamber Ribbon Cuttings, Animal Voice Advocacy, and DJ's Clamp Shack that I went to and tried to make sure people remember Bayport exists as well. And went to a couple Christmas events through the Chamber, too. And then, I just wanted to give a little shout out to Ethan for planning that border battle. He didn't get a chance last month to talk about that, but it sounds like it went.
Yeah.
Went really well, so, congrats on that, so.
What happened with the Minnesota strategy?
Yeah, I think we were under, underrepresented, right?
No, we had, we had three times, the people at Wisconsin did.
Oh, I thought it was the other way around.
No, 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 the Wisconsin people all had to pull, like, there was, I know there was one woman, she pulled all five times. And three, like, two of the dudes after like pulling.
Oh, so you did all.
They were like, we can't do it, like, we're exhausted, like, it's a lot harder, like, I didn't actually pull, because we had enough Minnesota people, but it, it's actually.
It's harder than you think, because it's pretty equal.
Couple of the guys were like, I mean, they were big, like, in shape guys, and they looked at me and they're like, we can't, we can't do it anymore.
Now, you're gonna make people, you're gonna make people afraid to go next year.
No, that's not gonna happen, they're gonna be.
Go get exhausted.
It's gonna fill up next year, for sure. So, we got a little over half of what we were open, but the community came down, because there had to be four, 500 people hanging out.
Nice.
Yeah.
That's about it, right?
And you got really good PR after the fact.
Yeah.
I felt like, like, they're like, oh, they did this border battle, which, so I think that's gonna help for next year, definitely.
It was good, thank you.
Yeah, good job. All right, John?
Um, it took me a little while to get back to, well, just a couple Bayport-related things. Some are old because of how our meetings and how often we meet there.
Yeah, because you meet like right after our meetings, usually, right?
The Middle St. Croix Watershed Management Organization, it talks about, it has to do with the school. And I'm gonna try and summarize. After performing a higher level of engineering review to and determining infiltration is appropriate for the site, revise submitted materials, or received, and it happened in October. The MSCWMO recommends the project be approved with the following conditions, and the permission to connect to County Storm Sewer, provide adequate construction guidance, guidance to prevent infiltration base, basin clogging or compaction, and demonstrate performance and provide a minimum eight-foot axis to reach inlet-outlets of infiltration basin three.
So, what does all that mean? They approved it, is the takeaway?
So, yeah, with the conditions, Matt might, Matt, that, that letter is literally made out to Matt, and it's old, sort of old news now, but it's.
Okay.
New news as it pertains to WMO Bayport stuff. So, it was just a, I don't know, a final hurdle for them, or a hurdle for the project. I don't know, a, a final hurdle for them, or a hurdle for the project moving forward from the WMO standpoint, and there was one other Bayport one, let's see if I can quickly find it.
I'll make sure you're being heard on your microphone.
Oh, sorry, I'm trying to, uh, what was the other, oh, the um just starting the process with the development, what is it, Pine Haven, what are we calling the new?
Bay.
Bay Haven project on the top of the hill, so that's just coming across.
Okay.
Um, the WMO right now, and we don't have a meeting scheduled this week, I have read, and so it'll be a while before I have anything else.
All right, thank you, John. Should we move along to the Staff and City Administrator Report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Fire Chief Ising.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Uh, for the month of December, our call volume was a hundred and seven compared to a hundred and three in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the final, uh, two thousand twenty-four call volume is one thousand two hundred and seventy compared to one thousand two hundred and nineteen in twenty twenty-three. Monthly drills were ice rescue and our Tender One operation, fire inspections are ongoing, and plan reviews, we did the village uh, green lighting, we had the car seat clinic up at our station, and this next, this month, we have the Washington County Fire Chiefs. With that, I stand for any questions? This is where you say the fire department's your favorite department?
Just kidding.
Understood.
Whoops. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Jackson.
Madam Mayor, council.
Hi, Jay.
I know your PD is your favorite car. Uh, I only have a couple things, um, I know it was, uh, we've been hyping this for a couple months now, but Officer Lipowski had her um, day to shine at the Minnesota Wild game, uh, was a great event, they recognized her for her community service, um. I wanna say five of her partners, I think, joined her out there with their loved ones, um, the Minnesota Wild surprised us at the last minute, and offered up a Zamboni ride, so it was a lot of fun for them, good team building, um, so I was glad that a lot of her partners were able to attend. Uh, Toys for Tots this year was another great event, um. We were surprised by getting a large donation from Bernie Lauer, who, uh, lives up in Inspiration, who just absolutely filled our lobby with toys this year. Um, and we were able to get him, um, to go with Officer Cornell to deliver the toys.
Cool.
And then Carol Levin actually did a small spot with him on the donation that he did with Officer Cornell, so. Also, always thankful to Croydale, uh, the Minnesota Department of Corrections, First State Bank, um, and everyone else that participated in the event this year for us, so thank you very much for that. Um, we attended the lighting of the Village Green, uh, by Officer Lipowski and Officer Cornell. And then just a reminder, it was also in the newsletter, the odd even, odd even parking is uh, in place right now, so just making sure that we get the vehicles moved, so public works can fall, so. Uh, we did just get, it's not on your memo, but uh, just today, we are working with a Cub Skeleton is interested in getting a tour of the police department specifically to learn about being a detective, so we're trying to set that up right now, so that's all I have for you, I'll stand for questions.
Just because it's a chance to do it, could you remind the, uh, the parameters of the odd even parking?
Well, you put me on the spot here.
Maybe that's Matt's job more than you. Simon, who knows this? Nobody knows.
The day. Well, it's new, so.
It is new, but you've been, you've.
Even address is even.
On even days, you park on the even side of the road based on the house side.
But you have to plan for what the next day is, because it's after midnight.
It's, it's a time of day window, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the time of day is one AM to seven AM.
So keep an eye on it.
After midnight, so.
Yes, well, and, and frankly, if the residents use common sense and are courteous, it's easy to comply, and, and just try and get your, when it needs to be plowed, try and get your stuff off the streets, or.
The other thing that is important for me, that, I, this is a pet peeve of mine, is when they are parked on both sides of the roads and it's snowy,
Yes.
a fire truck isn't gonna even be able to get through on the road, so I think it's smart for us to have the odd even.
Well, and our officers do keep an eye on it, and I know that.
I stand by it, too.
Can let us know if he's having any issues, and we'll go knock on doors, too, so.
Yeah, and I know we haven't had a lot of snow again this year, but it's, I'm sure it's coming.
Yeah, last year, too, we got pretty lucky, so.
Yeah, that's what I mean, again, yeah, this year, yeah. All right.
Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll look what Director Worth, we even covered one of your things, you ready? Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, Mr. Bliss. Welcome. I don't even have to say it.
Favorite department.
Um, one thing that, uh, I got some comments on were the orange pylons that you see popped up along ninety-five. Um, small little thing, took a lot to get that figured out, uh, worked with MnDOT a little bit, those are actually marking pylons. Uh, you've noticed they're kind of, uh, a little bit of a mess out there, but um, they are necessary for the state, and we did negotiate with them to have half of them removed, so we've walked around town, and um, in the spring, we'll have several of the, about half of them removed, so just FYI, I don't know if anybody's even noticed them, but
So those are permanent, they're supposed to stay there forever, these?
Correct.
Oh, I thought they were temporary.
Typically, they're more of a rural application, um, I was confused by that, too, but they are there for marking the fiber optic cable that they recently ran through town. Um.
Hmm.
So, just heads up on that, those are, are permanent, if any questions, feel free to let me know. Um, hockey rinks are open, hockey rink and pleasure rink are open, um. Feel free to get into the warming house, that is open, clean, open, and the lights are on, and open for business down there. Um, there was a patch repair on the road between, uh, on Point Road. Um, for those residents that may be wondering, that, uh, it was too late in the year to, to permanently repair the, the blacktop. Um, it was patched, uh, well, actually, we left it gravel. Uh, it's packed down good enough, so it should be passable, uh, but that will be completed in the spring. Um, and then you heard from Tori Christensen, um, this, this, earlier this meeting, um. Great guy, I've gotten to know him, um, working with him's been just a pleasure, and they're doing fantastic work out there. I try to get it out there daily, because it's just, uh, you, you're right, it is stark, definitely. Um, but if you are, um, a hiker, or you'd like to get to areas around uh, town that are similar, uh, there's tons of examples all over, uh, up and down the riverway. Um, you really don't need to look far, so, um, I encourage anybody, even now, get out there and take a look, it's, it's pretty impressive, so. Um, with that, I stand for questions.
Any questions for Simon? Oh, thank you. All right.
Assistant Administrator Taylor.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, the most recent addition of the city's newsletter, Bayport News, went to print this week. Highlights include a reminder about the odd even winter parking that we just talked about, uh, volunteer openings for the Planning Commission, the Foundation for the Bayport Library, and the Police Reserve Program. Uh, update on the solar gram, grant at the fire station, and then again, the farewell gathering for, uh, Connie Carlson at the library from four to five thirty on January sixteenth. Uh, staff continues to be extremely busy with various zoning projects and land use applications. Uh, the Planning Commission is scheduled to meet on Tuesday, January fourteenth, that's when we can get a quorum, uh, to consider the following items, uh, an annexation petition and preliminary plat for Bay Haven, which is the Anderson Farm parcel across from the fire station. Uh, the development consists of a mix of residential single-family and multifamily dwelling units. And then secondly, a conditional use permit for Lenny's Garage on Fifth Avenue North, and the permit is to continue allowing online auto sales with outdoor storage and display on the site. Other projects, um, this was discussed at the workshop tonight, a potential annexation and lot split for Rick Federowski, um, and he owns the parcel adjacent to the Anderson Farm and next to the site for the new elementary school. And then also a final plat and land use applications for the new school, which is anticipated to be heard by the Planning Commission in February. Um, just noting again, the Planning Commission is on a Tuesday instead of a Monday this month, on January fourteenth. Um, January twentieth, city hall is closed for the holiday. And then lastly, if any council members, um, that haven't already attended the Elected Leaders Institute that the League of Minnesota Cities, uh, hosts, Carl is already registered and is going to the newly elected, um, but there also is an experienced city council member track, so if anyone wants to register for that, let me know, and I'll get you, I'll set up.
So Marv, the forty-five-year veteran of being a mayor from Independence, he was at the last elected, yeah, so even he goes to the experienced ones, so.
So I think the deadline for that is, uh, right around February first, so just let me know.
Yeah, I'm glad you're signed up. That's good, yeah.
I stand for questions.
Thanks, Sarah.
Madam Mayor, members of council, uh, most of my things were covered tonight, the only other outstanding one is the Stormwater Utility. Um, SCH and city staff are moving forward with ordinance language pertaining to the setup of that utility, um, and how it will be billed to residents. Um, we're planning on having, uh, that on the, um, March agenda, um, kind of for like a public hearing essentially, even though it's not a public hearing, um, or just like an informational session. Um, so if the public has any questions about it, they are welcome to attend. Um, other than that, all of my other items were covered. Stand for questions.
All right, thanks, Matt. Okay, does anyone wanna go home?
Yes, I'm gonna go to work instead.
Oh, okay, sorry. You're gonna make a motion?
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Katie and John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to pose? All right, thank you. We are done.